Huge church. And a good program.
Ryan, here's the...
Good singing. Okay.
A couple of good speeches.
To get something like that at...
No.
That's the sound.
Get to put on a couple of my ribbons.
We had a very coin game, twice.
Oh, it is supposed to be the... It'd be...
Yes. And they shut down, and then they... And then they shut down.
Once they went down the Safeway without a drive-through, they pretty much died.
I can't believe they did that to pass the price.
Yeah, that was crazy. He was on a triple net lease of $3,000 a month.
Is that how much it was?
Couldn't make it. He went and got another job with the girls on it.
Well, they moved out of state. Didn't they move out of state?
Soon as Lisa was up, he was gone.
Yeah.
Lisa couldn't make a go of it.
It's seven o'clock.
It is. Well, where's Lisa?
Oh, she's not going to be here tonight. You just have me.
That's my reason why I came on. Because staff said, yeah. All I got is covering magazine, you know?
You need... Where's your packet?
Pardon?
He forgot it.
Not sure.
Miss Amy?
Lisa always has a cover.
I'll give him mine, and we can...
All I need is just the...
No, I think he'll need the packet.
I haven't never...
I was gonna see if you can have ours, so we can share.
Did you get an agenda?
No.
Here you go.
Well, we're gonna call to order the meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission this 14th of November 2013. And Sally, if we could have a roll call.
Thank you. Mr. DeVoe?
I'm here.
Mr. Watson?
Here.
Ms. Mattingly?
Here.
Ms. Probst?
Here.
Mr. Rollinger?
Present.
Mr. Schrader?
Here.
Mr. Standard?
Here.
Mr. Vogel?
President.
Mr. Yockheimer?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum this evening with eight members present.
I'd like you to join us in a pledge of allegiance as we get this program started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? And do we have any changes, corrections? Mr. Rollinger? Okay. We look for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is a request and/or public hearings. Case S U B 13-004, the Sanctuary Final Plat. Request for approval of a final plat to create one large lot containing 1,46,87 acres, located in a portion of Section 26 Township 12, South Range 69, west of the Sixth Prime Meridian, more specifically at 5849 Trout Creek Road, County Road 25, and 800 Gospel Truth Way. Woodland Park, Colorado, for the purpose of relocating the Charis Bible College to the site as requested by Andrew Womack Ministries Incorporated. Madam Planner?
Thank you. You'll recall, last June 2012, there was a planned unit development, and that was proposed for a 147-acre tract of land on the west side of Woodland Park. And that planned unit development was approved for the Charis Bible College site with associated improvements. Since June of last year, the group Andrew Womack Ministries has begun development of this site, and as one of the conditions of approving a certificate of occupancy for the first buildings is that a final plat be processed and recorded. So, the final development plan is shown on the screen. And also, at the same time the final development plan was being processed, a preliminary plat for the entire site was also approved. And don't let the word preliminary throw you. A preliminary plat is actually the most important part of plating a parcel or of land into usually roads and lots and blocks and for future development. This preliminary plat proposed one large lot because it will remain under the same ownership and will be serviced with a private access drive, Gospel Truth Way, and that it will serve for the campus of the Charis Bible College. The first development is occurring in this portion of the site, and it is the classroom building, which is over 76,000 square feet. And then the second phase will be an attached structure that will house their 12, 2,500-seat auditorium and offices and more classrooms. So, this will be developed in phases, and they are hoping to open with new students this January. January 6th will be their first semester of students, and approximately 650 students will be attending classes in two sessions, a morning session and an evening session. So, moving through, I wanted to share with you a few of the slides of the buildings. This is the entrance to the sanctuary, and it has a gatehouse, a covered gatehouse, which is a little bit more than 2,000 square feet. It is nearly completed and should receive a certificate of occupancy by the end of next month in December. As you enter the site through Gospel Truth Way, then toward the end, here is a photo of the building that is under construction. We had the chance to tour this building a couple of weeks ago, and they are very, very busy putting the finishing touches on the inside and the outside of the building. It is two levels. The classrooms are mostly in the lower level, and then the upstairs is a large open room they call the banquet hall. So, this will serve nicely for the new classes that will start in January. Along with the two buildings that are under construction, first, they started with the installation of infrastructure after the construction drawings were approved. And here this evening is Mr. Campbell, Kyle Campbell, with Classic Engineering, and he will be able to answer any questions that you might have about the development and the final plat. But he was instrumental in designing the water mains, all the connections with sewer water, the dry utilities for electric, gas, and phone, the private road, erosion and sediment control facilities, as well as the culverts and drainage facilities. Next slide shows a detention pond that will service the site and be able to collect the runoff from these improved areas and then release the runoff in a... at a historic rate. There were also some off-site improvements along Trout Creek Road, and so there was a widening of the access drive here to create a left turn. And then going toward the south, there was a widening of Trout Creek Road that approached the intersection at Highway 24 in order to create a dedicated left-turn lane at the traffic signal, and then also a lane that is multipurpose for right turns, left turns, and straight ahead. So, those improvements were completed and all done according to CDOT standards. There was also protection of the open space, and we caught some deer crossing the road here in the upper photo, and protection of the three existing ponds that are on the site, which do have wetlands and floodplains associated with a portion of those spaces. The final plat is really a perfunctory, technical kind of thing, since the preliminary plat was approved, the construction drawings were approved, and the development proceeded as planned. The first page of the final plat calls out the legal description, the dedications, any special notes, and then also has the sign-offs and certifications of the Planning Commission Chairman, the mayor, and the clerk and recorder, and the treasurer. The next sheet in the final plat is the overall picture of the legal description with the specific dimensions and directions, bearings for the survey that creates the total boundary of this tract. And I wanted to point out what we discovered with the original legal description, which was done through deeds and what we call a meets and bounds description, because there was no final plat or plating associated with this property, is that a portion of the original legal description encroached onto Trout Creek Road. This is a road that was never actually platted. It was a prescriptive use, which are many of the old Teller County roads were established just from the use, the historic use of that property. So, what Womack Ministries agreed to do was to dedicate a segment of their property to the city in order to create that boundary that is along Trout Creek Road. So, there is a small dedication of public land, to public land for that road right-of-way. Then sheet number three shows a more focused, detailed look at the western side of the parcel, which calls out all of the easements and the dimensions associated with those easements. The easements are for primarily the city water and sewer lines. There's also easements for those dry utilities, the electric, the gas, and the phone. There are also easements associated with Westwood Lakes and preserving those. Sheet number four is the eastern side of the tract that details the easements as well for the various water looping lines. There was a new water line that looped from Sturman Industries toward this portion and then looped over to the building in order to create a continuous system of water, so if one line breaks, they can be served from another direction. And then there are also water connections that will be able to loop over to the hospital in the future as well. So, with that, staff recommends approval, and I know this sheet looks a little busy. This first condition is to clean up a few little tweaks on these final plaits, and Kyle will have that done before it goes to City Council on December 5th. These are very minor corrections to the plat. But items number two and three are standard requirements in that when there is a dedication of property for public use, the surveyor is required to create a letter that identifies the actual area, the number of acres that is being dedicated. And then item number three is a requirement that a title commitment, title insurance policy is provided to the city in the amount of $24,000 per acre based on that. So, items, one is a... The condition number one is a cleanup, and conditions two and three will move forward as part of the standard requirements for final plaits when there is a public dedication of land. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the plaits.
I've got one question on the title insurance, Sally.
Yes.
The amount of such title insurance shall be established by multiplying the total land acreage within such streets?
Yes.
And has that number been calculated?
That's... The surveyor will provide that to us before it goes to City Council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions?
Applicants' presentation.
Good evening, Kyle Campbell with Classic Consulting, Engineers and Surveyors on behalf of Andrew Womack Ministries. Feels like just yesterday I was in front of this commission presenting this project, so it's hard to believe it's 15 months later. And if you haven't been up to the site, and I'm glad to hear that you made it up to the site, Sally, because it is truly amazing once you get into the site and see the main building that they've constructed and everything associated with it. I really don't have much to add. We've been able to review staff's comments. We take no exception to them. As a matter of fact, I already have the corrected plat that I'll be sending to Sally tomorrow morning that corrects all these items that she's mentioned on there. And I would just add that Andrew Womack Ministries and myself have thoroughly enjoyed working with city staff. It's been a real pleasure from the onset, getting through all the technical issues, and then here sort of at the final technical stage of wrapping up the final plat. So, I just wanted to say thanks to city staff for working so closely with us on getting this project to the finish line. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? I have one. When this originally came for annexation 15 months ago, when you presented the drainage plans and the road going into that, I remember asking a question, I was on a council at that point, about 100-year floodplain, 500-year floodplain on that road. And then, I think this summer, with all this past summer, you had some damage out there from the rain that we got this previous summer. Has that issue been addressed as far as that not taking place again because there was some question back during that application that really wouldn't hold back? There was some concern that may not have been adequate.
Actually, there are only two locations that I'm aware of that actually had any damage, one of which, the main roadway that crosses going up to the building, there's a large box culvert that goes underneath it. And it was under construction at the time of some of the heavy rains, and so most of the damage that we saw there was construction-related. Things hadn't been stabilized yet. The wing walls hadn't been constructed on the drainage crossing. And so, you know, that was one that we weren't really surprised to see just because of the timing of the storm events and where it was at in construction. There was some damage closer to Trout Creek Road. There was a small culvert that crosses underneath Trout Creek Road. And what had happened is, as the pipe exited the side slope, it was sitting higher than what it really should have been. It should have been lower to the bottom. So, it created some erosion down the slope. That has since been corrected, or is in the process of being corrected, to lower that pipe down and restabilize that slope. So, all in all, based upon the storm events that this area saw, as well as the region saw, the site held up very well.
That was a good test.
Yeah. It certainly was. And the existing pond that you see when you first drive into the site, some of the original plans had the embankment for that pond was going to be used for the main access road. The state came back and said, "We couldn't use that because we couldn't stabilize it." They didn't really want a roadway going across it because they were concerned about the integrity. Held up fine. And so, everything else, everything else, I think, has held up very well.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? At this point, we'll open up public comment. Has... I don't have a list. Did anybody sign up before that? Is there anybody here that would like to talk about that at this point? Since there can't be a whole bunch of you come up if I said that. Alrighty. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Seeing no rebuttal from applicant, I don't think that's necessary for us to do. Planning Commission, any final questions concerning staff or anybody concerning this?
Well, I'd like to say, based on the photographs, I'd like to compliment the applicant on the work that's been done. Particularly, the structures are very much in keeping with the character of our mountain community, and I'm very pleased with what I see so far.
Just a sidebar, at the school board meeting last night, I think there was more of a presentation of what was taking place out there, and apparently there is some consideration being given for more than just Bible study out there, as far as business classes and different things that would aid in the community. At least that's what was presented last night at the school board. So, that's kind of interesting. We can surely use continuing education out there. That is interesting. Deliberation, motions, all of the above? I'll look for a motion in a second. If anybody, if there's any other discussion, speak up now. I will make a motion to approve this then?
That's it.
Okay. Do we have a second, or do we have a motion? I will withdraw if you were gonna do it. Joe?
Joe.
Jeff.
I can do it, Joe. You're not Joe. I'm okay today. It's been a bad day.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Okay.
The next thing to do is probably ought to call for the question.
Roll call, yes. DeVoe?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Schrader?
Yes.
Standard?
Yes.
And Yockheimer?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and this will move forward to the City Council meeting on December 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Woodland Station, Overlake District, Chapter 18-31. Consider a code amendment to the Woodland Station, Overlake District, signage section 18-31.060. This is legislative.
I have some handouts.
While Brian is doing some handouts for the next item, I did want to introduce this item to all of you and let you know that the standards for signage within the Woodland Station, Overlake District, were established some years ago in 2007. And since that time, we have not seen development on the 10 acres until recently. And these sign standards were done prior to the city doing its overall sign code overhaul in 2009 and '10, started in 2008. So, we have learned a lot about sign codes. We've created a very good sign code for the city within our zoning regulations, and it just seemed that it would behoove ourself and a wise approach to repeal those 2007 sign codes for Woodland Station that were, quite frankly, very difficult to interpret and were difficult to apply to a new development. So, it seemed like the best approach would be to adopt what we have on the books after our rigorous review for a couple of years, and make a few exceptions, and there are actually 12 exceptions, that would still preserve the character that Brian is going to talk about, that the DDA hopes to achieve with the Woodland Station development. So, Brian, you can take it away.
Thank you. For the record, Brian Flair, City Woodland Park Economic Development Office and Director of the Downtown Development Authority. It's always good to get back before the planning commission chairman DeVoe and commissioners. I think this is where a lot of the real work happens anyways. Sally reminded me that the last code revision took 28 months. I promise, I promise, we won't do that. We won't replicate that. Basically, what I want to do is give you a little bit of a primer of where we're at with Woodland Station, because I think it's important to the context of the discussion we're gonna have today relative to the overlay. If you look at the overall drawing, just to kind of give you an idea, Highway 24, this is Woodland Hardware right here, Center Street, Saddle Club Drive, Park Street. This was just recently completed. We've got a few punch list items to complete for this year-end project, but if you've been in and around Woodland Hardware, you can see that, you know, we're getting close. They hope to have a final CO by the end of the year, and then a, hopefully, an opening by mid-February 2014. So, we commissioned N E S, Tim Seibert, some of you know Tim, from previous activities with the city and some clients in the community, to really look at what we call a massing plan, what is the currently existing DDA property. And let me just point that out just by the arrow here. Basically, Pine Street, actually, you know, where Pine is here, the Polaris dealership is here, what used to be Flutterby's is right here, so that comes in here. We're showing conceptually that Pine Street will punch through, and I'll talk about that a little bit. But the DDA property essentially encompasses everything down to this property line, which just over the... To the south would be the Mobile Home Park. So, you're really looking at everything within this area is the DDA property, which is approximately 10 acres. Okay? We've included some off-site, given some recent conversations we've had with landowners. Vectra has a piece right in here. We have not included anything with the Mobile Home Park, because there have not been any active discussions with the landowner, other than the fact that they may be interested in selling, which I think most people know. What you're probably aware of is that the AmeriGas site sold. There's a current development group, Arden Weatherford, Steve Randolph, Kip Unruh who's out of Kansas City. I think these are names that might be familiar to you, local, other than Kip, local group. They purchased the AmeriGas site, removed the tank. We had a bit of a hurrah moment there. And this development, and then they... They're under contract with DDA to purchase Lot 2, which is this area right here. You saw a beer garden presence there this summer. They'll continue that for 2014, but they collectively will own this piece right here. Their development group, combined with the DDA, we commissioned N E S to do, again, this overall massing plan. Really to get an idea, I think many of you that might be familiar with a lot of the work that's been done in the last 10 years, there's been a lot of elaborate plans and discussions, some rather costly. We really wanted to know, what can we do here economically? What makes sense with a lot of what we call surface parking versus structured parking? Not that we'd never do structured parking, but obviously, when you get into structured parking, it raises the price tag per lot to about 15,000 to 20,000 per lot, or per parking space. So, we've avoided that. It's a mixed use. There's some residential component, and I'll just kind of go through, and again, the basis of the discussion for signs, but they're looking at this as micro retail in this area. in this area. One of the interesting things, we're having discussions with the farmer's market, bringing the farmer's market over to Woodland Station, this would be a, an indoor pavilion, the plan is that the farmer's market would go along Pine, or what's been called here Festival Street. These two buildings would be retail first floor, residential second floor, same thing here, retail first floor, residential second floor, understanding that retail is an important presence within, within Woodland Station, second floor typically not as much emphasis, so residential seemed to make sense. We're in ongoing discussions with a group that's interested in the Family Entertainment Center, which includes bowling, laser tag, sports, sports bar, family theater, et cetera, this is a 20,000 square foot building, both 17,000 footprint, 3,000 mezzanine, hotel group, we're in discussions with a hotel group on this piece here, and then a multiple event center, 500-seat multiple event center that would serve several purposes on a, on a 365-day venue, music theater, et cetera. And the idea is, would it all fit on the property? And knowing that with Woodland Hardware, I think most people know the history, I think in the context of Woodland Station, there probably was never, in the very beginning, a thought given to a 22,000 square foot hardware store as one of the anchors. And if I look at, I, I really look at this kind of blocked area, 24, Park Street, down to Columbine, up back to West, Saddle Club in this design would punch all the way through from Park to West. There's some great consideration here, but it's felt that we should try to make that happen for traffic flow purposes. At buildout, you're gonna end up with about 380 spaces, and then 42 on the hotel site, retail would be 31,800, the micro-retail would be 41,550 square feet, so you're, you know, you're close to 50,000 square feet of total retail. The Beer Garden, Farmer's Market would include about 22,000 square feet of space, again, the Family Entertainment's about 17,000, the Event Center's about 14,000. Farmer's Market would accommodate up to 80 tent vendors, residential 38 units, and then the hotel has 60 rooms. So, you can, again, this is about what we call an 80% concept plan, that basically looks at what we can have within the site. The main reason to think about this is, this is the general context of what we're looking at in terms of land use, and how does that relate to signage? We have our first applicant imminent relative to a sign application, and again, it's, it's a, it's a use that was not traditionally thought of, and we originally thought of Woodland Station. So, one of the thoughts we had, I want to introduce Tanner Coy, who's on our DDA board, he's also representative of our Design Review Committee for the DDA, we have various committees that look at financial, Main Street, et cetera, Tanner's in Design Review, which would be an integral part of signage review for the project. What we're presenting today was reviewed by our Design Review Committee and recommended to the Planning Commission this evening. So, what we're trying to do is, you've got an overlay sign code that's fairly restrictive, it's considerably more restrictive than your current sign code, that again, you spent considerable amount of time going through, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think this probably was done maybe 11 years ago, the code itself, so again, you know, history, looking at what was intended then and what we're looking at realistically now, might have some different applications. So, we, knowing that, knowing that we've got an end user that'll be submitting an application within the next 30 days, we've looked at tweaking the overlay code without literally throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, but yet, beginning this process of what is realistic, given the size of the building, their total frontage, which I've included on your desktop, this is a general proposal that one could look at, and I'll just go to that real quickly, that they're proposing with some general ideas of how does, how would it look on the building, it seems to scale appropriately, this is, just as an example, this would be consistent with your current code, but not consistent with the overlay district would allow. And I'll go into the detail as we go through the chart, the...
Backspace.
Backspace, the, there we are. And we'll go through the chart here in a minute, but I just want to give you a context of what we're dealing with in what I call real time, and what makes sense, but yet, still try to respect the, the overlay district as it sits today, but think a little bit now 21st century relative to your current sign code, that again, you spent considerable amount of time going through. So, I, I'd like to go through this, and then you can just follow along with the, with the, Sally put this together and did a great job, looking at basically three provisions, type of sign that we might anticipate, the 2007 Woodland Station Overlay District, Section 18.31060, 2010 sign code, regular allowances, this is your existing code for everything outside of the Woodland Station overlay, and then what we're talking about in terms of amendment. And we can go through this, and I, I would open it up to, if anybody has a question or comment, I would think it would be appropriate just to, to interrupt in this, in this format. And is there any question to date about, or currently where we're at in terms of what we're trying to do, before I go into the detail of this? Any comments, questions? I'll go through this then, the wall signs, looking at the type of sign, single occupant building, doesn't, is not addressed in the, the current overlay, was again, the idea was that all the buildings would be in an interconnected multi-tenant arrangement, so there wasn't even anything that addressed it. One of the things that we look at, particularly for the larger buildings, is one square foot of signage space for one linear foot of wall length, and in the case of Woodland Hardware, it's 155 linear feet, so they'd be allowed to have a 155 square feet of sign space. And we'll get into what that means here in a minute. The 2013, what we're proposing as an amendment this evening, there are no exceptions in 18.48, so that's, in, in other words, in Sally I would refer, would not conflict with your current sign code. And again, the one thing to remember, I, I'll take a step back, with this, we're adopting your current sign code with these exceptions, if that makes sense. So, we're basically eliminating the current overlay sign code and adopting the existing sign code, so it's universal, with these exceptions, okay? So, again, thinking about what the overlay zone represented, but yet, understanding that there may, there's some things that both the Design Review Committee and the DDA Board would like to support. Wall sign with a multi-tenant building, we would go back to the overlay, it's one square foot of two linear feet of frontage, basically half of what you would be allowed under the existing code for businesses, if it has its own exterior entrance, and the, the current code again is the same, saying it's one square foot for one linear foot of wall length, which sign is placed upon, up to 200, no exceptions. So, we're basically going to the, the one square foot per one linear foot in that particular provision, so that would be a change in what's in the overlay. Detached freestine signs in the, in the overlay zone, they're not permitted, okay? Within the current sign code, they're permitted based on frontage, speed limit, et cetera. We're proposing that they not be permitted, because again, when you look at that, that's, that overall concept plan, there's not a lot of room that would be appropriate, there may be two uses in there, i.e. the hardware store, maybe the, the hotel, that would make sense to have a freestanding sign, so in this, our, our proposal is not permitted except allowed at the entrances to Woodland Station, as low-profile signs, okay? And low-profile is explaining, is six feet or lower, okay, in the, in the current code. So, imagine those except at the entrances to Woodland Station, again, no higher than six feet. So, the...
So, the hotel would not be allowed to have a freestanding sign?
Under this, under this scenario, that's correct, would not be allowed to have a freestanding sign. It would be allowed under policy to be within those monument signs on the edge of the road, but currently, remember that within the overlay zone, there is no provision for freestanding. So, we, we stayed with that, and there was a feeling on the part of, and I, and I, I'll ask Tanner to speak to some of these, if there's some specific questions, but we decided to stay with that, within the provisions of the existing overlay. Does that make sense? Is that understood? Electronic and digital signs not permitted in the current overlay, it is permitted in the existing zone, the EMD overlay areas, which are, are present, within the proposal, they're not permitted except in the EMD overlay area next to Berks and Park, which is already established, if you recall, that's already an established overlay area. Backlit, plastic, or internally illuminated, again, in the overlay zone, it's not permitted, and within the current sign code, it is permitted, we're, we're staying with the overlay and saying that it's not permitted there. Roof signs, not addressed in the overlay zone code, within the, the existing code, may be attached to roof but not exceed two inches of the peak of the roof, we're proposing that it's not permitted. Window signs, special event and sale signs must be designed as part of the overall window display and/or sandwiched sidewalk signs, temporary painted signs and windows are not permitted, and then under the, that's under the overlay code, under this current sign code, up to 100% of window area can be used for non-permanent signage, and we're proposing that up to 25% of, of the window area can be used for non-permanent signage. So, we're making a provision for some, for some use there. Temporary signs for development projects, i.e. initial construction development, not addressed in the current overlay, the current code allows for 32 square feet, we're saying it's allowed but at 16 square feet. Flags, doesn't, it's not addressed in the current overlay, they're allowed in the current city sign code, and we're saying not permitted unless approved by the Woodland Station, the Woodland Station Design Review Committee. On a, every sign, application would be reviewed by the design, the Woodland Station Design Review, or, I'm sorry, the DDA Design Review Committee, and then obviously, and then go on to staff for final applicant, application submitted.
Oh, excuse me, how would you handle the Stars and Stripes then?
Then, it would come before our Woodland Station Design Committee, and then from there, there would be some review of that, and then it would go on to the planning staff. And I think it's really in the context of how the flag is used, you know, there's, there's not an intent to not allow the flag, but I think it's just to make sure that it's appropriately used, and that was a consideration under that category. Temporary signs, banners, and attention-getting devices not permitted in the current overlay zone. Banners within the current sign code are allowed for 120 days per year, and that 36 square feet. Banners would be allowed in the, in the amendment for special events or grand openings, up to 14 days per calendar year, okay?
Are you gonna put a size limit on that? What are your thoughts on?
What did we end up with, did we have a side, side limit on that, Kip?
It, it would be the 36.
36, yeah.
Just checking, thank you.
And then finally, portable sidewalk signs, special event and sale signs must be designed as part of the overall window, that's in the current overlay, under the current sign code, it's allowed 16 square feet on private property and six square feet in right-of-way within the special, the special district. And then, within the, within the amendment, it allows for six square feet for both private property and in the right-of-way, we restrict the square footage, and add it to the special downtown area. And then, number 10, special downtown area not addressed in the overlay, allows for projecting, within the current code, allows for projecting signs and sidewalk signs and right-of-way in minimum of 25 square feet of wall signage, with 12 square feet of projecting signs. Within the amendment, we've removed the minimum square footage to go back to, again, like on the sidewalk sign, six square feet, and then the standard wall signage and projecting signage would apply as it's stated above in our amendment. Number 11, poster frame signs, not addressed in the current overlay code, within the existing sign code of the city, you have eight square feet sign is allowed, poster frames are not allowed in our amendment proposal.
What are poster frames?
They're, you, you see the signs at like convenience stores that kind of are on that hinge, that type of, that type of signage. And again, in the current code, they're allowed at eight square feet, and we're just saying they're not permitted in the, with Woodland Station.
It's 22 by 4.
Lastly, manual changeable copy signs not permitted in the overlay, they are permitted in the, a current code, and we're suggesting that they're not permitted.
I don't know what that is.
That's the reader boards that you change the letters, those are manual changeable copy.
Thank you.
The, I wanted to go back to the wall signs on multi-tenant building, Sally, we're, we, in the overlay, it's one square foot for two linear feet, in the current code, it's one square foot for one linear foot.
Right.
And so, we're recommending that in the, in the overlay, or in the existing, in the new amendment.
Yes.
I just want to make that clear, because it wasn't clear in my mind. So, again, the, we're, we've got a use, I go back to the current design relative to what we're trying to accomplish, and we, we envision, I mean, some 10, 11 years ago, the overlay zone was created, we have something different that could develop in the field. So, we're really looking at a practical application, I mean, what really hits me is I've got a, I've got Woodland Hardware that's looking for sign permits, and we're trying to be reasonable, and, you know, there's been discussions on various levels with what we could have in terms of total square footage, we felt comfortable with this. I, the one thing I would say is that this is not a static process, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna get other uses, the things that we may not consider. I think the thought, the question about the freestanding sign for the hotel, that may be a legitimate concern, I, instead of going through and not fully understanding, remember, we're at 80% design with our concept plan, what could be there, we'd rather take this sort of step-by-step process. We do, we are suggesting within Woodland Station that we want to be something unique, there's no question about it, we have an opportunity to do something very unique within Woodland Station, it is, it is different than what the existing sign code totally allows, and we'd like the opportunity to go down that road. If there are things that just don't make sense, then we, we drop back and say, hey, let's, let's tweak it. You know, at some point, you gotta start, we felt that the current overlay zone was too restrictive, but yet, at the same time, we wanted to respect some of the things that were thought about back 10 years ago, relative to, again, creating this unique Woodland Station environment. With that, I, I would be glad to take questions, and I'll also, I'll offer up Tanner to kind of give some of his insights of the, of the commission, so would like to hear some additional comment.
On the drawing for the Woodland Hardware Store, is this what they are projecting they want to do, as far as signage is concerned?
That is what they presented.
Okay, based on that...
Kelly Redonald did present that, yes.
Does it fit in with your current overlay?
It does not. It would, it would be, the current overlay would only allow for half of the 150, 155, so 155 divided by two will give you the square footage, what would be allowed, they, they wouldn't come close to what they're currently proposing. And one of the things, I look at it, I mean, it's kind of a practical, everybody has their own opinion about signage, I mean, it's kind of like art, in my opinion, but if you look at that, that was the reason I wanted to show it to you, to me, that seems well-balanced for the size of the building, but yet, under a current overlay, they could only have, you know, something in the magnitude of 78 whatever square feet, and it's, we feel that's not adequate, we don't feel that that's adequately addressing what they're trying to accomplish.
But it fits within, if we change, if we accept the propose, it would fit into that?
That's correct, it would, the current code outside of Woodland Overlay does provide one square foot for one linear foot that would accommodate what they're proposing.
Up to 200 square feet.
I will be completely honest, that one of the things they wanted was backlit, and we've had discussions, and this has been kind of an ongoing discussion, I realize there's feelings on both sides of the, the aisle on this, and we decided because, and this faces south, by the way, if you've not ventured into this, this looks right to the south, to the, there's a neighborhood to the east, a neighborhood directly to the south, and we, we gave this considerable thought, but in the end, we felt, let's hold with the current overlay zone provision of no backlit. And, you know, I, ideally, the applicant would love backlit, but I think in the end, they would prefer to have more square footage. if they couldn't have backlit and, and hold firm on the backlit. But that was a, that was probably one of the more difficult discussions we had within, within our design group and just internally in staff with this question on backlit. Because it is allowed in your current code.
Could you conceivably see having same kinds of discussions with all the, with the, each of the other, whatever they may be, entities that come in there?
The big difference here, where I can kind of draw the line in the sand and, and kind of differentiate is the size of this building. In fact, we had code that would say, we looked at code that said if you were over 100 linear feet, you would get some additional provision. It got kind of complicated in administering. So with Sally's help, we kind of, we kind of went back to what the current sign code allows. I really think we draw the line because, first of all, it's 155, over 100 linear feet of frontage. We're going to have, you know, when you look at the overall project from, if I could just go back to, the only two that really might impact, this has got 155 feet of frontage here. You know, this is over, this is over 200, close to 200 feet of frontage here. So there aren't many other provisions within this, you know, this, the scope of the project that would go there. So I, I don't see dealing with necessarily those kind of issues when we get into these smaller buildings. I think we'll be fine. I think there'll be adequate signage. But then again, I don't, you know, if we have something that just isn't working, I don't want to, I would like the ability to say, hey, let's tweak it. Let's make it make sense. We're trying to create a unique situation here that's practical, that is business friendly, but yet accomplishes the goal that I think was set out some 10 years ago. This size building was not anticipated 10 years ago. I think, I heard the word boutique. This does not represent boutique. And even the hotel at this size probably doesn't either. But I think, given what the market is showing us today, this is a practical concept. And yet, we want to try to remain some, keep something unique. And, you know, with something that's not outside the bounds of fairness, I think, you know, in that concept as well.
Could you not just adopt the current city's code? And then as you progress through the development of the Woodland Station, see, instead of having an additional ordinance or whatever that we're talking about here tonight, couldn't you just adopt the existing code and then seek deviations from it depending upon the kind of business that happens to come into those different spots there?
One of the things in the sign code, and if any of you that lived through the 28 months will know, one of the things that came out of the business conversation was we want fairness across the board. So it for, I mean, I'm all for saying, don't put any dimensions in. In fact, I suggested that early on, and Sally thought I was, had lost my marbles. The bottom line is, you've got to set standards somewhere. And, you know, our, if the attorney was here, she'd tell us the same thing. She'd say, draw the line in the sand somewhere. And there is a reason we have a variance process. In some applications, it makes sense. We talked about doing just that. In fact, some of our DDA board members didn't particularly care for the fact that we had separate standards. But yet, there is a uniqueness here. And I think the overall, and Tanner may speak to this as well. There was the desire to be more restrictive within the overlay because it creates a certain uniqueness for this area. And I, that was kind of the predominant thought that came out of our final discussion.
Questions?
With respect to the, any of the illuminated signs, we've had, we sort of had this go around before. I guess I would love to see somewhere that there'll be, the luminance of those signs will be limited at night to no more than 100 per square meter.
What this promotes, under what we're proposing, is what we call indirect lighting. And I.
Right, but regardless of, of the source of light.
Correct.
No more than 100.
We talked about nits. I don't know if that's the proper terminology.
Yeah, that works.
We actually talked about that. I don't know if you have provisions currently in the current code.
The current code really talks about 1,000 nits, and that's appropriate for daytime.
Right.
For nighttime use, way too bright.
I would agree. John?
Well, that's talking about.
Our difficulty with putting a standard in is then we have to be able to enforce it.
Well, as we discussed in the previous go-around, is that you can leave that to the.
Manufacturer.
To a box, to a.
And in order to measure nits, you have to have a nits gun that runs about $5,000.
About $3,000.
Three?
Or you borrow one from Boulder.
Borrow it from.
There's a mentor we really like, Boulder. I would believe they would. One of the things that I hear you saying, that's correct, that this is not cast in stone because they can still go to the Board of Adjustment. If they want a variance, if they don't like this ordinance, or one particular one that applies to what they were doing, they can seek a variance on that. Do they have to go through the Board of Adjustment to do that? Can they come to, can they come to planning or come to that? Or is this cast to the point, your line, your sand, as you call it, that there's, there's no exception?
Well, my experience with some of your recent activities, and Sally, correct me if I'm wrong. For example, the EMD sign that was done north of 24, that was done in a variance format. I, and.
Which sign's that?
Gene Kosuleski's EMD sign.
Okay.
I, that was done, that was handled by the Board of Adjustment. There are provisions. I mean, we did think about EMD, for example, the Multiple Event Center. Seems like a practical application. We felt internally that might be best handled in a variance format. And I, you know, again, it's not a perfect world. I've administered sign code. I've sat where Sally is. It's not a perfect world. But yet, at the same time, we're trying to, there's a business fairness. But yet, I go back, we are trying to create, I don't, mix no, you know, no mixed notions. We are trying to create a unique situation with Woodland Station. And that's, some of the language is speaking to that.
One of the things that takes place is when you, when you try to light it up with conventional lighting, shining on a sign, it normally takes quite a bit of light to get the same effect that you would with a backlit sign as far as, and I'm talking about dark skies. I'm talking about lighting that shines upward, that if you get it bright enough, and if you drive down, down our main streets, you can see the ones such as where the Martini Hut is, where you can't read anything. It's not bright enough. But if you go by Jeff Book's place with the ATV and the snowmobiles, that's very bright. But I don't know if that violates what you're talking about. But you got to put a lot of horsepower behind the light if it's not a backlit light to get it bright enough so that people can read it. Because it takes a really bright light to do that.
It might help for Steve to explain why he believes 100 nits or a candela per square meter would, would be recommendable.
There are a couple of sources, but there's been some research done in Arizona. There's some municipalities there, really have done studies, and concluded that about 100 nits is, is appropriate for nighttime light there. And of course, there are dark sky issues as much as we are concerned about it here. And then I actually borrowed one of these meters and took a survey of some of the illuminated signs here in town. And there are some that are higher, some that are lower. But based on those examples, the Board of Adjustment basically kind of agreed that signs that were 100 nits were not too bright and still very light. So that was where we came from.
One of the things you get into when we had our different sign discussions here when we were at our, when we discussed sign for 28 months, was that there's a certain amount of nits that are required in a downtown area that's bright compared to a certain amount of nits that are required if you're out in the middle of a dark area. And they're not the same.
Yeah, our, our background luminance is extraordinarily dark here as opposed to.
It's because of our beautiful streetlights that don't shine up anything. But I'm, what I'm saying is, you can't have a fast, hard rule of 100. It depends on where the signs are.
Right, and so this was up and down.
Okay.
24 is where we went.
One other thing you addressed, I got two other things and I'm done. Flags. I'm assuming we're talking American flags?
It, well, this doesn't specifically say American.
No, but is that, is that encompassing American flags?
I would say the answer is yes.
Okay. So what you're saying is, Design Review Committee, which is two people, you and Jan Comer, are going to report your findings to the Planning Department and not go back to the DDA, which was the way it was originally intended, and see if they made the recommendation to planning? Because that's what you said.
It's a, it's a policy right now on the, on our review committees. I've got several other than design.
Okay.
They do make recommendations to the board.
To the DDA?
They, they, yeah.
Okay, you didn't say that, so I was just clarifying that.
I think, you know, it's, I'm trying to keep it a fluid process. You know, I, I think the intent, you're correct, John, is to, is that reviewing body would make a recommendation to the board.
Right.
That, and let me say on flags, you know, I'm, you know, I'm very protective of the right to wave flags. One of the things that is not appropriate is somebody wants to fly a garrison flag, if you know what a garrison flag is, you know, in, in a small business. It just, it's not, in my opinion, it's not appropriate. Now, other people may say, that's none of your business. I get it. But at the same time, there are standards that are acceptable and are not intrusive to the right to fly the American flag. And I, you know, it's one of those issues, you know, that we can discuss and.
Don't we have that in our, we already have that in our city code?
It is. There is a section that deals with non-commercial flags, which are your state flags, the American flag, the Colorado flag, other governmental agencies, civic club flags. And there, right now, stated that they cannot exceed 96 square feet in total area, and that no flagpole shall exceed 30 feet tall. And that when you're flying flags, you must adhere to the US flag protocol. But you are allowed to include commercial flags if they are flown with an American flag. So that means advertising on your flag, as long as that does not exceed 64 square feet. So what I would advise the Design Review Committee is to use this as your basis for evaluating a proposal for flags within Woodland Station.
I don't, I don't think we would have a problem necessarily with that. It's a policy consideration, and it, and that's the kind of common sense approach we would like to take.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
As long as you've got that flexibility to do it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that just makes sense. That meets the criteria, I think, of what was discussed within the Review Committee.
When we, when you solicit, say, a, a chain hotel to come in here. If you remember with Tim Lee, we were looking at a Hampton Inn.
Right.
I don't know if Hampton Inn is going to allow you to light on the top of a building on the side. The amount of light that's going to be required to light up a sign at the third story or fourth story level to be able to be seen from Highway 24 may light up our skies more than you want them to. And, you know, in many cases, they want their logo. You know, they, they, similar to McDonald's, but I mean, they have a logo. And there, I would think there needs to be some type of a provision to be able to try to accommodate those rather than just, I mean, just say that you're, you know, the old way of lighting up the big posters on the highways was, was really bright lights on, on that fabric. And they were really bright, far, maybe not as glaring as a, as a light emitting diode sign, but far more glaring than something that's backlit. And there's just, cookie cutter doesn't work. You got to be able to go with that a little bit. Just as long as you, you give yourself the flexibility to do that. It's what you've got to be able to do.
Well, and I, I don't disagree. I think the hotel's a good example. Kind of like the, the Woodland Hardware. We're not going to have a lot of those within Woodland Station.
Right.
I, I would like to think that it's a practical approach. I, you know, and I can't speak for the Review Committee, and I won't. But if there's consideration given to a backlit that's tasteful or freestanding, that we, we would go through, I don't know, Sally, if it's appropriate to say a variance provision or some provision like that, that there would be a lot of discussion. But it would be reviewed by our Design Review Committee and recommendations given to staff. And, you know, we could go through that process. Again, not a perfect science relative to trying to address every type of land use, particularly when we interjected a 22,000 square foot building that sort of changed the playing field, if you will. We're dealing with it, trying to deal with it practically, but yet still stay within the framework of what you originally were thinking about some 10 years ago.
One of the things I think we enjoy as a planning commission is that conditional use gives us freedom to be able to tailor whatever is coming in that was in, within the standards and what the norms would be here. And when you go to a permitted use, you sometimes lose that ability to do that, both ways. And then you have to go through a hearing process where sometimes a lot of those things can be worked out between the developer. You have to have the flexibility and staff to work those things out. You just don't want to handcuff yourself so much that you don't have the ability to do that. That's all by the ordinance. Now, this is just an amendment to the overlay that's far more extensive than just the signage, right? Because there's, there's a, there's a design review, which I was on the original one, that talks about the quality of the fixtures, the type of roof, the type of shingles, all of that stuff. That was in the original design review.
John, if I could, well, I was going to say, it only applies to Section 18.31.
Right, we're just, we're just doing one part of that.
Correct.
Okay.
Of dealing with signage.
Right.
That's, that's correct.
And just to clarify, the design standards are a resolution. They are not part of the zoning code. So the design standards are managed with the Design Review Committee taking a look at those. And there's quite a bit of flexibility in those.
And if I could say in summation, there's been a lot of collaboration between planning and the DDA on this because you guys have literally been through the sign wars. You know, we wanted to be able to capture that pain and experience, so to speak, in a practical approach. And that's, that's been our intent as we've gone through this process.
Okay. I'll shut up now. Anybody else have anything else to talk about? Okay, now, are we going through, are we following this?
Do we mo, do we motion?
We don't have to, right?
You don't have to because you don't have an applicant.
Well, you had it underneath all that stuff.
You do, though, need to have a public hearing.
That's what I meant.
I mean, a public comment, so if anybody in the audience wants to comment.
You've stayed here this whole time. You have to get up and say something.
You can't wait.
Bring your boy with you if you want to. We'll see how he, no, I was teasing. Whatever you want.
Sorry.
Good evening. Well, first, any questions?
You have to say who you are and what you're doing here.
Tanner Coy. Tonight, I am here representing the DDA's Design Review Committee. There are two of us, as you mentioned earlier. I'm one half of that. We did spend quite a bit of time reviewing the current sign code, working with Sally and Brian, and went through everything pretty much line by line. I learned a lot. I can understand why it took 28 months to get to where we did. My, my understanding with these revisions is that we are simply trying to accommodate some flexibility from what there was. We're trying to open this up a little bit and allow for a few more things signage-wise than, than the current 2007 code allows. Partly because of the one applicant that has, that has come forward, and that's Woodland Hardware. That's, that's one building, one need and one issue. It was enough for us to begin the dialogue and review these things and make some recommendations. That's really where we're at right now. I am not at all opposed, just so you know, as, as a member of the Design Review Committee, I'm not at all opposed to allowing appropriate backlit sign applications when the time is right. Right now, that's not in our recommendation. Right now, that's not in our recommendation because these buildings, this hotel and this family entertainment center, they're just concepts. Almost everything on here is just a concept. This isn't once it's voted on. We don't need to write any revisions into the code now for hypothetical situations, buildings and businesses that really, right now, aren't anywhere other than in a concept. When those things become more of a reality, we address them and we make the right decisions. I'm a, I'm a big fan of dark skies personally. I, I like dimmer light in our downtown. I think that's part of the environment that we have here in Woodland Park. That's part of why people come here and not Colorado Springs or Denver or somewhere else. I think that we need to work to protect that. And until we have a reason to, to change those requirements, you know, I, I'm not suggesting that we do.
However, your building has two electronic signs.
Three.
Three. And your, and your sign for, the building is also very attractive, and I don't think you're too bright there.
I understand. Personally, I do not like electronic message display signs. I hate them.
It came with the building, I understand.
Came with the building, and my decision was leave them off, which would not look right, get rid of them, which as the property owner, I have a hard time doing, or just use them appropriately. And so we do. My preference is to dim them. I've tried doing that unsuccessfully. There are some settings in the software that I have to dim those signs and it does not seem to work. So if I could dim them, I would. I understand, though, that they're at the 100-nit level, which is considered appropriate. That's fine. To me, they're still a bit on the bright side.
If I could, what's your building?
Oh, Tweeds, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. It's obnoxious when you're driving up.
I think the secret in lighting is how you direct it, not how bright it is sometimes.
I, I agree.
I have been a proponent to get rid of our runway lights for our, for our lights downtown, for our streetlights, that all they do is make a glare. They don't light up much of anything. But when budgets are better and days are better down the road perhaps, because we don't direct the light downward, we don't light up the buildings and the place looks like it's all shut down at night when you go through it. And that's just, it's not having a problem with dark skies, it's just lighting up the fronts of the building to make it more attractive. We don't do, we don't do a very good job of that, I don't think, as retailers downtown.
Hopefully the new lights in Woodland Station, they have the.
Great. That might be, that might be a new standard.
If you're familiar with my business, I think you'll understand that I do strive for higher quality presentation in what we do, in my store. And it's my opinion that with our design standards and guidelines, our signage standards, we should, we should reach for the highest standards we can in the presentation of our properties, our structures, our signs, our businesses, our products and our community. I, I do believe that these suggestions will help us accomplish that. Again, going to the flags, I, I'm a big fan of the American flag. I think that, you know, we should have them all over town. I think that it shows our patriotism and I don't want to restrict that at all. But flags is one category and there are a lot more of them than the American flag. And I've seen a lot of people with a lot of poor taste out there do a lot of the wrong things with that flags, banners and everything else. My preference is don't allow them. And when somebody has a problem with that and they come to the DDA and say, hey, all I want is to put up the American flag, we say, great, go for it.
So you helped, I mean, you approve everything, so you helped create that.
Yes.
A fair statement. And then, so what's the expectation from us, just to provide any opinions on it?
Yes, and the role of the planning commission is that you review any modifications to Title 18. So that's why this is brought to you tonight, is to make a recommendation to city council. On a parallel track, the DDA is making their recommendation to city council as well.
Sorry, I was getting a little. Thank you, Sal.
Tanner, has the Design Review Committee gone over these changes with the DDA Board?
No.
That'll happen next Tuesday.
At the DDA Board?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering if you did that or not.
Just a function of timing. That is the intent.
Okay.
It's just.
Very good. Thanks.
Anything else?
There's no public left. They're all gone.
Close the public conference.
We'll close the public conference.
Go to deliberations.
Any questions, folks?
I have a couple of questions, Brian, on the concept plan, but maybe we should deal with the.
We should.
Signage issue first?
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
The concept plan's not part of tonight's, but you're.
Right.
More than willing to talk about it, if you like.
I just had a couple of general questions since it was presented to us. Well, I, for one, am very, very supportive, probably no surprise to a few people, about the 12 exceptions. Very, very important to make sure that Woodland Station is reflective of the character of our community. I only wish that some of these exceptions were applied to the entire city, but that was, that was a 28-month process. Good job. Thank you.
Any other comment, discussion? If not, we're looking for.
I have one more comment that I wanted to get on the record. The city attorney, Erin Smith, has been looking at the ordinance and she will be tweaking this to put it into more formal legal terms than what I drafted for the draft that you saw. So just to let you know that what will go forward to city council is in much better legal format and content. It does not change the content or the 12 exceptions, it's just a little bit different language.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, sure.
Chairman DeVoe, if I could make one last comment. The one, as we go through this process, I appreciate the ability to work with planning commission. I, like I said, I think this is where a lot of the blood and guts happens right here. And we have a very good relationship with the planning staff, so please feel free to interact with our office as we go through this process because it is our intent, as Tanner said, to really create a unique product. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number, whatever it's going to be.
It's going to be 1201.
Okay. Thank you. To amend the Woodland Station overlay District Section 18.31.2060, signage as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second.
Watson?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Schrader?
Yes.
Standard?
Yes.
Yoxheimer?
Yes.
And DeVoe?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, so this will move forward to the DDA on Tuesday and then to city council next Thursday. Thank you for that discussion.
Chairman has no report. Planning directors report.
I would like to welcome a new face to our planning department, that's Amy Wolin. Amy is in the back there being trained by Deidre. She is going to be our halftime permit technician to help us out with the building department and other planning responsibilities. So Amy is here learning tonight. And then lastly, we do not have any cases that have come in for the next meeting, which would be December 12th. If you would like, we're happy to schedule a work session. What we have been doing in work session mode is that we did review the entire use matrix of Title 18, and our next step was to decide which things we should start working on next. The other thing is that we did have a joint work session with city council on accessory dwelling units.
Yes.
And we were tasked with coming forward with some proposals related to that. So if you would like, we can hold a work session on December 12th. We don't have a meeting on Thanksgiving, so there's a little bit of a break about a month before we get back together.
Will we have a meeting between December 12th and January?
It is not likely unless something really pressing comes up and we need to call a special meeting.
So the only way we're going to allow a meeting on the 12th is it's a combination Christmas party meeting.
Well, there will be a Christmas party for the volunteer groups, and I apologize, I don't have that date memorized, but you'll be getting a notice about that here soon at the cultural center like we did last year with all the volunteers.
I wasn't referring to that. I was referring to cookies.
Oh, yes.
I was referring to maybe a little.
We can do pie and cookies.
Potluck, and we would have a little.
And definitely.
Christmas beverage.
Yeah.
Think that would be a very nice thing to do.
We could do that on a work session.
Okay.
Sally, is December 11 volunteer predication?
Ah, it's the night before our December 12th meeting.
Two parties in a row. It's just too hard to take. Okay.
It's the season.
Under discussion and comment, Mr. Rollinger had a question for Mr. Flair.
Oh. Okay, you've, you've taken your, your, but I can, I can ask here. Okay. Oh, two questions. A 22,000 square foot beer garden? Where, where, where is that?
Doesn't exist.
It actually is, it was actually the square footage of everything that's included in here.
Ah, got it. Okay.
It's more, it's more than just.
You can tell where my interests lie.
Oh, that's good.
I have a feeling the only beer garden.
I think Arden would love to do a 22,000 square foot beer garden. That's not what it was intended, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, is, is the, within the paved area of the hardware store, will they be storing their rental equipment?
Yes.
Yes.
On the east side of the building? And it's got screen, screening and so forth?
Next to Park Street.
It's got to be.
It'd be east of the.
It's got to be over here, yeah.
On the east side, yeah.
Right, got it, got it.
It's fully enclosed.
And the, so I guess my question is, is the family entertainment center? Single story?
It'd be two-story.
Could be two?
Yes.
Okay. And the hotel is shown as two stories?
Could be two to three depending on.
Two to three, and I see there are a couple of two stories here.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my question is, a line of sight to construction equipment? Is that, is that something you folks have thought of?
Well, we, we have thought of it, but again, it's one of those things that was there when we walked in the door. We know it's there. I think Sally and you as a planning commission have done a very good job in screening to the extent that you can.
Right.
And, you know, hopefully with the screening and landscaping and so forth that it doesn't become a problem. I mean, that's, that's about the best that we can, can hope for, given the condition that, you know, we have there.
Understood. And I also certainly understand this is conceptual in nature.
Remember the grade difference, too. I mean, from the, from the top of Berchtesgaden Alley all the way down to Columbine is almost a 40-foot grade.
We're coming downhill, yeah, clearly.
Or different in elevation.
What, and this may not be a problem at the time that, that a hotel would, would come into this spot here, but certainly at two or three stories, anybody who has a room on this side has a perfect line of sight to the trailer park.
I, there are visions, and I have to always be careful, because those are people's homes, that there will be a transition. And we're actively working with folks that are interested in doing that.
Good.
With another housing product down the road.
Good.
I think that's why when you look at that, again, I say 24 to Columbine, West Street to Park, I think we look at that, even though it's not all Woodland Station today, I think in the context of what our future vision is, it would be included.
Which is a better view, the construction equipment or the trailer park? I guess you have to toss that up.
I picked up trash in the trailer park on trash pickup days, so I'm, I'm very aware of what, of what that looks like. One, one last thing, and I'm sure you must know this, I was thinking about, about the hotel, you mentioned the Hampton Inn, possibility or, you know, some, some chain. Typically, those, those hotels, many of them have flag poles and, and clearly they want to fly their corporate, corporate flag.
Sure.
You know, with a logo, and obviously the Stars and Stripes has to be.
Above.
Above.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And again, I think it goes with the ordinance protocol.
Question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Tom?
No, thank you very much.
You discussed the family theater.
Yes, or the family entertainment center.
That's what I was curious about.
Yeah.
We've already had a DDA commitment that we're paying for a four-plex theater in the community. Are we going to have something that's in competition to them?
No. What it is, what they propose, it's a family viewing theater. If you bring your own video for, like a 45C, this is kind of popular in and across the country in these bowling venues. You know, somebody has a birthday party and they want to invite, or, you know, some kind of a.
YouTube.
Yeah. You just throw in your video. It's not intended to be a, in fact, the, the reality is Bill Page has cornered the market with his four theaters because the people that lease that digital product will only lease to so many theaters. And right now, they're at absorption. So they originally thought about a theater back probably 10 years ago, but Bill jumped, Bill got the edge on that, frankly.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Do you want?
Sure, we'll take those back. Thank you.
Do you want, do you want to look at this?
You can hold that.
Okay.
You should have browsed.
There's one. There's two.
Okay.